All right, I'm going to invite everyone to stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone to the October 20th meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of October 6th.
Let's move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on the minutes at all? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve the financial report.
So move.
Sorry. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that at all? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have here a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act. What were we going to do, just talk about?
I think that, and Dan had put together a good agenda that we had an early discussion on. I think the board should be informed about what we have so far in terms of projects. Want to outline what you have, Dan?
You want me?
You did a great job.
I can outline it.
I'll add it. All yours, sir.
I'll outline it and Dan can add it because I was at the meeting. I got to hear it from him.
Agreed.
Okay, so today at, I think it was 2:00, I was about three minutes late. KCI and Dan and Dan Hanley, Gene Minter, Louis George and Steve Repo. And I think that was it. Attended the meeting today to talk about projects that would qualify for the ARPA-funded, possibly ARPA-funded projects. What we wanted to do is try to come up with an idea of estimated cost so that we could get this information in and it would give us an idea of how much these upgrades would cost. So, on the very first project was the Elton Water Plant UV Upgrade. The purpose of this is to use a UV disinfection into the existing system of the town's surface water treatment plant to ensure compliance with MDE requirements on the surface water treatment. This is a necessity and actually the project estimate cost is about $450,000. The second project was the Chesapeake Boulevard Force Main. This is, they're still doing a little bit of investigation. They're not sure if they're going to use, it has currently a four-inch sanitary sewer force main. They're not sure if they're going to pump it up to a six-inch or eight-inch. This is for our new customer down there, Clean, that we need to do this upgrade. And the number really wasn't firmed up that I could hear. I think Gene Minter mentioned $450,000 that she actually applied for a different grant for, but the engineering estimate was between $400,000 and $600,000. So if we used a high number, I'll come up with a number here at the end. Delaware Avenue PRV Vault. And this is to create a new pressure zone associated with the Southfield's water tower to better serve the Southfield's development. This is a valve vault to be installed on the existing 12-inch main and this project would cost between $30,000 and $50,000. Now we're going to get into the high-dollar ones. Red Hill Reservoir Rehabilitation. We all know that the Red Hill Reservoir was built in, what year was it? 1907 or 1908?
1935.
1935, there we go. And that currently, it's their concrete structures look like swimming pools. They got like a swimming pool cover over top of them and if anyone ever went up there and looked at them, it's, it looks like they were done in 1930s. But the technology has changed. We've got leaks up there, we've got cracks in the concrete. So to do a complete rehabilitation of the reservoirs, the estimate is between $2.7 million and $3.7 million.
Now that's to get completed?
Complete it, yes. That would be a turnkey project. And then the last item that they're proposing would be the Elton Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrade Design Only. And the design to take our plant from 3.2 million gallons a day to 4.07 million gallons a day. It would be about an 18-month design phase and it would be, our estimate is about $1.5 million for design. That's not including the amount that it's going to cost to get that done at that point. So total of these five jobs, we're looking at close to $6 million is what we're estimating. We currently have about $7.6 million in the ARPA money and $6 million would go, could go completely to infrastructure, which these are projects that Dan and KCI and Lou and staff has identified as probably the best solution for us to get done. So, what am I missing?
The, one of the things you mentioned at the meeting, that valid point was to use some of this money for upgrading the valves around down. Either to put new valves in in critical areas and to replace some of the older valves that are in there.
Yes.
And these probably wouldn't be more than $100,000 or $200,000 to do all of them.
Depends on the extent.
Yeah, I'm guessing because there's a lot of restoration work that goes into that. And hopefully when you go to replace a valve, all the pipes don't break in the process. Depends on what kind of pipes they are.
A key to fixing the water leak is you can shut the water off with the valves. If you can, that adds another layer.
Well, we found out today, we got a lot of, the older valves actually turn the opposite way.
Yeah.
As crazy as that sounds. So you had left-handed valves on the old way and then your new ones turn off the way that you would think things would turn off. And then you get a little bit confused out there if you got a left-handed valve and a right-handed valve. And next thing you know, you still got lines that are open, not open, not shut.
Especially in the middle of the night during a leak.
Yeah.
And.
So I guess, Lou, you need some type of, well, I don't think we need to make a.
No, no.
Any decision, but this is kind of where staff has moved forward with this. And as I said, we still have, we got over a million dollars left out of that first staunch. And then we would still have about $7.5 million in the next staunch that I'm not sure unless you put it specifically toward the waste water treatment plant. And I think there was a suggestion today that the design would take a couple more years before we get the actual design. And we believe that, I think Steve mentioned that our loan for the existent plant, existing plant would be paid off in about three years. So if that's paid off, then maybe the play would be then is to get another long-term loan on the new addition of the waste water treatment plant. So it kind of makes sense.
We would go with a revolving state loan fund and try to get into a bond issuance with the state or something in conjunction with any ARPA money that we have that sorts that. But this would be a very expensive process upgrading that plant.
I can tell you, I've been trying to ask everyone how we could use some of the ARPA money for equipment, how we could use, and every angle I go, it's kind of been a no. You just can't use it that way. And I'm trying my best. I still think that we can work some with nonprofits if there's things in place and they have to show you the dollars they lost directly related to COVID. I think we can help out those ways. But I don't think that we can just give money to get money.
No, you can't give money to get money. I certainly understand that, but how you going to be determined if some of this money can help them out of progress?
Yeah, I want it to.
Is there a determination back there how that can be done?
Were we talking about an application?
Yeah, I need to get a little bit more information on it. They said they had some discussion about it at a couple of the MML Fall Workshops.
I got in touch with the MML.
Yep.
The last few days and I asked them if they, they're coming, someone's come up with a template for an application. And as soon as we have that, of course, I'll distribute to the board. But we'll have to set up a program where we have criteria. As Commissioner Givens suggested, criteria under which nonprofits, for example, would be allocated certain funds. And a good example of that is the Far Company. They're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation. And I had Sam Bowler send me their Form 990s that gives their assets and liabilities and things of that nature. So you can actually see on there what their expenses are and everything. But the problem with things like that is, Far Company an example, a lot of their problems deal with aging equipment and things like that. And they're not actually related to a health issue that ARPA funds would deem eligible. That's a problem. And they're looking for recurrent money too, not just.
Yeah, but apart from.
So it's going to be a little more complicated.
Apart from the recurrent money, the fact that they couldn't raise the money themselves because of COVID, like they couldn't do their functions or fundraisers, things like that, would that be how they would qualify?
I'm not sure if that would qualify or not. It may qualify, but for how much, that's the issue. If they, let's say they raised $50,000 a year for previous years. I don't know, and then they don't do it anymore. That may be a qualifying factor, but I'm not exactly sure if that relates directly with a health issue that ARPA was designed for. Because if you, I got, believe it or not, that's a 150-page document. It's called the IRS's interim rule. That along with the Social Security Act and three or four other big documents I have. They're pretty explicit in there about how that money is used. And it's all targeted on how COVID really affected the communities. And that's it. So you've got to be really careful there. And another thing where you have to realize is that because once we expend at least $750,000 on an annual basis during a fiscal year, we have to have a single audit. And that single audit's done, they've got to look at everything we do very clearly. So there has to be meticulous details about what we do and how we do it, what we're eligible for. Otherwise we have to pay it all back, you know?
I think the good news is, listen, we're going to get that template. We're going to take.
Yeah, that's the first step. I'd like to get at that point.
I think that's a good first step. Very good. Lou, do you have anything to report? You got a few items here.
Yeah, here. First item I have for, presented for adoption is Order 5-2021. I had brought that up in the previous meeting. It allows the, it modifies the pension system that allows officers that are hired to service as police officers to be given credit from the time they're hired rather than the time they're sworn. Because their time they're sworn can be anywhere from six months or more afterwards after they get done academy and field training and things. But this will allow them to be given credit in the pension system from the date they're hired. And also they will contribute at that point too. So, you know, they're not getting something for free. They're actually contributing part of the pay. But I would recommend that the town authorize the adoption of 5-2021 to amend the Elton Police Pension Plan.
We have a motion to amend.
So move.
There we go. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on amending the police pension? It's being presented for adoption. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is the Chesapeake Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Force Main Project that we discussed under ARPA there. The KCI has submitted a proposal for $85,000 to do all the design work on this project. And it is very extensive engineering involved in it. So if we want to do this project to support Clean, the nano medicine coming out there that'll need excessive or more additional, now we want to look at it, sewer capacity. Then I recommend that the board authorize KCI to initiate the design of it. As the mayor indicated, this isn't the construction of it. This is just the design of it. We need to design and inspect.
We have.
Construction. So I highly recommend you authorize the designing.
Do we have a motion to approve the sanitary sewer force main upgrade proposal that KCI presented?
Oh, it's not a good.
Got a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That makes the folks from Clean very happy.
The next item I have is a addendum to the environmental, during the environmental assessment of 205 Booth Street. He can't find any adequate closure on the heating oil tank that was removed from that site. Consequently, that's an open issue. In order to resolve that, he has went to Dan Hanley's team to dig the place up and find out if we have any bad soil there. Stevens will do the testing once they excavate. And we were using our people because that way he doesn't, as a consultant, he doesn't have to hire somebody else. And we have a very expertise available to us to bring that up. Of course, Dan's already notified for missed utility ticket and notify Elton Gas and things of that nature. And they expect to start this work on Tuesday, I believe. So once the samples are taken, they're sent to a lab to find out. They may not be something you could smell right away, but to see if they are sampling that have this contamination at a certain level. I think it's 230 milligrams per kilogram or something like that is the threshold. After that, you have to start removing soil. So we know that the landfill will accept it. So once they dig it up, then we can ascertain whether that's contaminated or not contaminated, hopefully. We know where to take it and backfill the hole once everything's gone. Samples are taken and everything's resolved. And hopefully you won't have to bring in what the MDE's oil control program. There are people that come in when you remove underground storage tanks, things of that nature, to make sure that the closure is done properly within the regulatory limits that they have in place. So I would recommend that we allow Stevens Environmental to proceed with the work they're going to do. They want $4,800 additional dollars, but Bill Stevens told me that they may not spend that. We don't, that's just a budget figure, so to speak. But I still need to authorize them to go forward with it. So far they've only billed us for $3,500 out of the $5,000 was initially authorized. So we should be all right, hopefully. We don't uncover Pandora's box in this process.
We have a motion to approve the $4,800 expense for 205 Booth Street.
So move.
The motion is second. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, when that sample was taken, how much dirt is brought up or how much soil brought up, Dan?
Probably just a bucket full of ton. Basically, we're going to take a Daco bucket, determine where we think the actual, well, Bill, Stevens Environmental, Steve, where you think the oil tanks were and see their contamination. So basically, it's not, that could be a huge hole. It's going to be a hole to figure out what determines based on that, because there's more testing needed.
So that's going to be closer to the surface or further down?
It goes to the surface. I'd say more, it was more than four feet, I'd be surprised.
Okay, thanks.
I think he's budgeted for eight samples.
Yeah, whatever he's got.
So we'll probably take them at different elevations to get the, the protocol done.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last item I have is Proclamation 32, that's 2021 Economic Development Week. The proclamation of the Maryland Commissioners of the Town of Elton declaring October 25th through the 29th, 2021 Economic Development Week in Elton. Whereas economic development relies on local government leadership to promote and support a vision for developing resilient communities. And whereas the Maryland Commissioners recognize that supporting existing businesses and creating opportunities for new businesses and entrepreneurs are key components in strengthening Elton's economic future for generations to come. Whereas economic development organizations such as the Maryland Economic Development Association and the Elton Alliance serve as resources committed to enhancing Elton's economic growth and vitality. Now therefore, being known that the Maryland Commissioners of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim October 25th through the 29th, 2021 as Economic Development Week. And Elton encourages all citizens to support local businesses and recognize the contributions of economic development organizations and the importance of building and maintaining a healthy economy.
We have a motion to accept proclamation P-32-2021.
So.
Got a motion? And a second. Any discussion on the Economic Development Week proclamation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's the items I have in mind.
Very good. You know, Lou, thank you for talking about economic development and Economic Development Week. Commissioner Massmano and myself attended the Elton Rotary Club Meeting on Monday night and I was very fortunate to be the guest speaker. And I took the notes that staff had given me about all the good things that we as a team has put together over the last X amount of years. And, you know, when you see it on paper and you see what we have been able to accomplish even during COVID. I mean, just take, just think about this. I should have had my notes with me, but we were able to complete a neighborhood community center. We were able to acquire an Elton Armory. We were able to procure the Elton Color School, which is going to be one of the finest museums on the East Coast once we get done with that. We were able to put new doors and windows in the Elk Landing property. And there was an additional list with that. But then with the amount of infill lots that have taken place, and I have to tell you, I truly think a lot was timing of the economy, but I also believe that a lot of it was that we did waive these hookup fees during that period of time. And we were able to get a lot of houses being built right now, which is going to help us in revenue importivity with real estate taxes. And then the amount of houses that are on the books right now, I think the number was, we've got over 300 and, oh, I got it right here. I do have it. I forgot, I was at the meeting today and she showed me. We've got three, we've got 40 houses currently right now that have been issued permits. We've got 391 recorded lots that are not under construction yet. So there's 391 that's ready to go. We have, in concept or preliminary plan, we have 2,278 homes. That's the concepts of projects like Temby Ridge, Southfield. Let me get to the right page again. I'm flipping it around here. Summit at Walnut Hill, Liberty Hill, Patriots Landing. So I mean, there's a lot of action that's kind of on our books right now. And then when it comes to commercial real estate and approved, we've got over, I think if I'm reading this right, over $2 million. No, I'm not exactly sure. Oh, that was the usage that we needed. The projects, commercial projects that are out there that are not under construction, the Bridge Street, many warehouses. You know, we just did the Ayers Anixations, the Mark Properties, the Hampton Inn. We've got possibly two more hotels off of Belleville Road that we're discussing right now. The Elton Business Professional Center, Country Inn Suites, the Summit at Walnut Hill. And these are the commercial properties. Price Elton Road, Price Unity Center, the Sheetz Gas Station Convenience Store. That's where the label was. The 7-Eleven, which is going there on the corner. The McConnell Warehouses, the LGH Properties, AKA Northeast Enterprises. I'm not exactly sure where that's at. And then you have, that's not even including Southfield Jet. And then we have the Clean Pharmaceutical, which could be another 21 acres of full build-out. So there's a lot of action that we have created over the last X amount of years. And I think when we left there, I think that the Rotary, I think they actually, it was a pretty good applause that we received for our economic development efforts for the Town of Elton. And I make it very clear, I don't hide this from anybody. I'm a pro-growth person and I like economic development. I think that that's how you can keep growing like this and then you don't have to increase your tax base. And, you know, if you believe it the right way and it all comes together, it's, you don't have to raise any taxes. So that was that.
Please have the powers to be the chair with us, providing.
Yeah, Lou, can you get a copy of this, the whole board? This was from Gene Minter, but you can have this one. I got one in the car, that's all.
Well, I'll take it, no, I have one emailed.
There we go. I think she did email to us. She might have emailed it to us.
No, no.
Yeah?
It's very interesting information.
It is very good information. Today I attended, the Cecil County Realtors had an event today for the installation of officers. And it was the first time I attended Rosewood, the Rosewood facility. And the Rosewood is, is you're going up north of Elton. As soon as you get out of town limits, that first farm on the right-hand side. It was a vineyard at one time. And I have to tell you, that place was absolutely amazing. They have a facility there for events. You could get married there, you could have birthday parties, you could have conventions. Because that's what they had today. They had a trade show, installation of officers, and then they had continuing education classes in the opposite building. And it was, it was amazing. It was absolutely amazing. I kind of look at that and if that was in town, that would be a beautiful location to have the conference center there. It would be a 60-unit room. I could, I can envision that right there on that farm that would serve that conference center. But it would also be able to, go right into my next statement, the Five Star. You know, I know some, did you attend? Did we all attend?
I did.
I didn't either.
It was, the Five Star event was something that Cecil County absolutely to be proud of. I watched it on MPT afterwards, after I left. And I was only up there a couple of hours. I ran into Charlie and Earl. I didn't, I don't know if I ran into you.
I was there on Sunday.
Sunday. And, but wow, that's all I can say. It really elevated us and I would, I would like to make one comment about that. At no point did they call the Five Star at Elton. Everything was Fair Hill, Fair Hill, Fair Hill. But I promise you, if there had been an accident up there and something happened, they would have said, "The accident happened in Elton." So it's frustrating sometimes that, I know it's an Elton address, there is no Fair Hill address. Fair Hill doesn't have an address. It's Elton, 21921. And it's, that would be one of those things that could help elevate all of us. But it was a wonderful event. Really enjoyed it and I'm looking forward to next year. The.
Could I comment on that?
Yeah.
I don't know if you realize it, but Steve Repo's wife and daughter were jump judges during that event. Very interesting, yeah. I never knew that Steve knew. Steve Rico. He was on duty somewhere else. I don't know, but Eleanor is a jump judge and I guess the daughter was involved too, so.
Ed's granddaughter was there?
Yeah.
The Queen's granddaughter was competing?
She was, yeah.
And what's her name's daughter that competed on the Olympic team just recently? The singer from. I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
From New York. Who sings New York State Alm.
Lacey Keys.
For the Joel? For the Joel.
He was up there?
Is she a rescue?
His daughter.
Oh, okay. It was, it was a wonderful event. That's all I can say.
It's going to grow.
It is going to grow. And I actually, after I left the Rotary Meeting, there was a few folks there at the Rotary Meeting wanted to take a look at the Elton Armory. So Michelle was, and I gave them a little tour today. And it's always interesting to get other people's perspective of looking at properties. And there was a lot of good things that I think we wrote down. But I think we need to figure out how we can budget some money toward the Armory or try to get some grants because it will deteriorate if we don't do some positive things in it. Because there was, you could see some of the. Because there was, you could see some of the plaster was starting to cave in in certain areas, and I just think that we need to, we need to put that on our list at a high, at a high point to see how we can budget some money there or start to apply for some grant money. And the last thing I have today, and I spoke a lot here today, was the, well, I got two more things, actually. I want to mention to the board that I'd like to not have the meeting, the third meeting in November, which would be November seventeenth, and no meeting on Wednesday, December fifteenth. Our charter states that we have to have one meeting a month, but we would still be having two meetings. We'll have a meeting on the third and tenth of November, and we'll have a meeting on the first and eighth of December, and then we'll get back to having meetings on the first and third Wednesday, the first of the year.
At, and all of them at twelve o'clock?
All of them at twelve o'clock. So that way, we can have our staff here. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was trick or treat. We get asked this every year, trick or treat, Halloween is on Sunday, October thirty-first, and we follow suit with the county, and the county has proclaimed trick or treat time from six o'clock to eight o'clock.
On Sunday?
On Sunday. Six o'clock to eight o'clock is trick or treat time, and just wanted to remind the board that the Halloween parade is Saturday, and it's actually at seven o'clock, which is a little surprising to me, too. I think this is the first time that we've ever had it on a Saturday, is that correct?
I think so.
I'm not sure.
We usually do it Friday.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the change was, but hey, let's roll with it and see what happens. But I'll be there in costume, and is your costume in?
I'm actually going to be out of town, they had asked me to MC it this year, and at first I agreed, then I realized that I had made flight arrangements, and I just didn't look at the dates.
So who's going to be the winter miser?
So, Earl.
Earl would be a good winter miser.
He would.
Well, the costumes they asked us to do this year, I'm the heat miser.
Snow miser and heat miser.
And.
And Margie's going to be Mother Nature. But me out, if you're in, you'd be a good.
All right, we got to dress Earl up.
We're talking about that.
Well, that's, that's all I have. Well, that's all I have this evening, and Gene, what do you have? Charles?
I'm good, other than the fact that, again, appreciate the opportunity of both the county and the P's inviting us to the Five Star. I believe there's only six in the world, I can correct me, two in Kentucky, and certainly one in Fair Hill, so that's close to us, even though it's not Elton, but near Elton. But it was a great event.
Perfect.
And that made me, to report assist of, I too, it was a good event, and enjoyed myself this Five Star.
I did have another question, I'm sorry. With all the police and the vaccination laws, has there been a, no, what has been required of our officers, anything?
With, with respect to what activity?
See, you're not listening, if you was in school, I'd have had you right out the door, in the hallway.
I spent a lot of time in the, in the corner.
Has there been anything mandated or required of our officers as you look at TV and see the great discussions that go?
One of the things that they have is body cameras, and they use body cameras now all the time, that way they can record what's going on. And the advantage of that is, and of course, I don't know what Carolyn is, but that a lot of times when they deal with, not necessarily defendant, but a person in the field, they may complain about what the officer did, and then when they actually look at the body camera, it's completely different, they change their story pretty quick. Other things is, I believe that, you know, the, what do you call it, the street rides unit is very active in acquiring weapons and things of that nature, in conjunction with the same police and the shared clubs. So I think they're conducting a lot of operations in order to try to get guns off the street, but of course, that, that'll go forever.
So what about the vaccine?
The vaccine? They, I don't know.
Yes, I don't know.
Vaccinations, are they required? I don't know.
I was just curious.
I have to follow up on vaccinations, I, after I saw what happens to Washington with Seattle Police and Chicago Police and New York Police, my God, I mean, I don't think they can afford to lose an officer, yet the guy on quitting, you know, the highway patrol in certain areas and everything, I don't fully understand.
The reason why, again, I ask that, because I think the world itself, not the total world, but United States is between the vaccinations, so not only does it affect the police department, it affects education, it affects state buildings, it affects government, it just affects all. So I just wonder where we were since we are the powers to be in the town of Elton, there has not been anything, I guess, as such, that needs to be brought forth, right, Mayor? There's nothing that the court should like?
No, I don't, I don't think that there has been anything that we need to mandate any, any vaccines in our town. I don't think, or not when I say our town, mandate any of our employees to get them. I don't think I want to go down that road.
I would never go down that road.
I just hope that every, I just hope everyone's doing it.
Right.
I don't even want to hear that subject. Rob, what do you have tonight?
Got a few things, actually. On my list, I had made a note to tell you all what a great job Rob did at the Rotary meeting. What was it, last night?
Monday.
Monday night? Did a really fine job, represented Elton well, let everybody know, and they were surprised at all of the things that we have accomplished over the last year or two, and it did give a nice round of applause, it was very well done.
Thank you.
I thought that the Maryland Five Star was a great success. Now, Ed Dow has been contacting me, I've been kind of working with him on some artwork for the railings that go down the concrete stairs in between my shop and what's it called, Lee's Place Theater. You know what I mean, the wide concrete steps. He asked me a week or so ago if we would grant him the ability to purchase material and build his own powder coating oven, to powder coat things, you know what that is? Powder coating? It looks like paint, it goes on real thick, and it's very durable and lasts for years. It's a beautiful finish. He estimates that it would cost about fifteen hundred dollars for him to buy the materials to buy the, to build the oven. And I just wanted to bring that up at this meeting, maybe we'll vote on that in the next meeting, is that the way?
Well, what is the vote going to be? I'm saying, I'm just saying, well, what's the vote going to be?
The vote would be to allow him to purchase the materials to build his own oven, to purchase one, I think he told me it would be between five and six thousand dollars, he can build one for about fifteen hundred.
So that's going to be all due?
That would belong to the town.
Okay, I understand that, where you go.
So I, I'm glad we got Dan here, I would say.
I'll, I'll address it.
There you go.
I'll take it. And he's built premises before, he's something else, that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, so it would come out of Dan's budget?
We'll take, we'll take care of it.
It would come out of Dan's budget, and then, very good. Do you think you can handle it?
I got it.
There you go.
But he, he builds the premises, he's really funny, just when he comes up, his ideas are amazing, so.
Yeah. Now, about two weeks ago, I came in here early and went through the police simulator, Gene did it as well, that was very interesting. That's something I wish that the general public could see. It really puts you in the eyes of the police officers as they encounter various situations, and it really catches you by surprise. And the way you interact with the people on the screen, it brings to light what you can and can't do, because after you interact, the police officers correct you or commend you on what you did. Mostly, it was correcting. I killed like four people. But anyway, they were mentioning that their simulator is very outdated, and they would like to get a new one. I think that would be a great thing if we could swing it somehow, and it's something we need to discuss in the future, but I would like to see them get their new simulator that they were asking for.
Probably software package. Carolyn, we'll get the chief to tell us what that would be.
One of the things to realize that we have forfeited money, so there's a source, depending on the cost of it, that we can go without, you know, you know, increasing the tax rates or anything like that. We do have money that the police confiscated, and it was forfeited by the court, so we can look into that.
I'd like to see the police coordinate a night where they invite the public to come in and witness this simulator.
Yeah, we brought that, I can tell you, the last time we did it was probably four years ago, and then we, it was, the county actually had it at one of our events, trying to think what event it was at, but it, it really wasn't all that well-attended for that event, but I agree with you, if you can get that simulator in the hands of some of the, especially our, some of the vocal members of the community.
Involved men, yeah.
And I think we've done that before.
That program was, what, twenty, it was really old, they were wearing bellbone.
As promised at the last meeting, I did go up and down Main Street and make everybody aware of the dumpster was getting ready to be removed, and if they had any last minute things to put in it that they should. I also made them aware of some of the things they could not put in there.
Thank you.
The last thing on my agenda is that I wanted to talk to you, Louis, and see how difficult or how easy is it going to be for me to gain access to the armory. At some point, I'm going to gather a crew, and we're going to go in there and strip down all the old fishing poles and put a new line on them for next year's fishing rodeo.
How difficult is it to get in there?
Yeah, I would like to do that on a Sunday.
Difficult is picking up a phone and say, Louis, I need to get into the garage, they're in the garage and they're locked up. I hope that's, I hope that's our standard key, I guess.
If that key never bothers too much.
Let's have another combination.
Just need to get a key.
Let's all in there and get in there, I can get you in there.
Okay.
Just let me know when you need, and we'll win.
Yeah, that's going to happen sometime over the next month or two.
Oh, that's fine, no problem.
Get a bunch of people to go.
We got all stacked in there safe, so nobody can get in there.
I'm sure a hundred poles we got stripped down. All right, and that's it for me.
Very good. We do have, last year, we weren't able to celebrate the Citizen of the Year, so last year's winner is, this year's winner, which is Margie Blyston, and on November eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, they're going to be celebrating her Citizen of the Year award, and I just want to make sure the town gets a table, Michelle. With that, this is the time that we open up the floor for the public. Mr. Dan Hanley, you have anything you want to say for the good of the Town of Elton?
We're very happy.
How the great, how the board is doing such a great job?
It's tremendous.
All right, very good. On the Zoom meeting, is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that would like to have anything to say this evening? All right, meeting adjourned.